My name's Corey Astle. I'm House District 51 Chair for the County Republican Party. So that's why we've hosted this. My co-host, Josh Cornea, and we have our timekeepers. Representative Corey Malloy, Representative Stephanie Grecius. And we want to also thank our candidates, all five of them were able to come. So I think that's pretty exciting. We're going to start with a pledge and then we're going to have a prayer. So I want to thank Dennis Beatty, a delegate from Lehigh, to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I want to invite Sergio Montez, delegate also from Lehigh, to offer the prayer for us. Okay, so our rules for tonight, we're going to give each candidate a two-minute opening, and then for each question, they're going to have two minutes to answer. If a candidate calls another candidate by name, then the named candidate gets 30 seconds rebuttal. And then we're going to finish with a one-minute closing, and we're going to have a rolling, rotating start. So Mr. Beltran is going to begin for us, and then Mr. Ugarte is going to have the first question, and so on and so forth. So for our timekeeping rules, Representative Malloy is going to raise the yellow card when you have 30 seconds left. And then when he raises the red card, we're all going to start clapping, and that is the end. And we're not going to be rude about it, but we are going to be definitive about it. And so we're going to move on for that. Okay. So let's have, I know that it'll be a little bit of a struggle, but let's have no clapping other than when they give their opening arguments, or sorry, opening statement, you're welcome to clap. But then, as we go through the questions, let's hold clapping and speaking.
Unless there's a red card.
Unless there's a red card, then we absolutely want you to clap, okay? Okay. And then at the end, looks like we do have some more chairs coming in. Thanks, guys. And if you guys could maybe help us put the chairs away at the end, that would be super helpful, and you'll have, you know, time to chat a little bit with our candidates. So to get started, Mr. Beltran, give us two minutes.
Can you hear me? Awesome. Well, thanks, Corey, Josh, Stephanie, and the other Corey for hosting today. Nice crowd. My name is Skyler Beltran, and I am running for Utah County Commissioner. My wife Kylie and I and our two boys live in Lehigh, and that was a big choice in running for this. The north part of our county, this area, we've been unrepresented for many, many years, and it's time that we're represented up here in the north. I have three main priorities I've been running this campaign on. The first is transportation. As you got here today, I'm sure you sat in traffic, and we need to be better at getting funding allocation as well as planning. Two things that are very important. The second's our budget. We need someone willing to make tough decisions on the budget, and I'm the private sector candidate in this race, and that's important to me. In our own personal budgets, we make cuts, we make hard decisions. We do not have the ability to tax and spend out of problems, and we need to bring that to the county government. And third is transparency and communication. I'd argue it's the most important thing. We need to be better at transparency and communication at the county level. We need to communicate and engage with the public, problem-solving, accountability. All of those things are solved and improved when we're publicly have discourse and dialogue, and we need to bring that to the county commission. So once again, my name's Skyler Beltran, and I ask for your vote for Utah County Commissioner.
Hello. Hey, my name is Jay Ugarte, and I'm from Santaquin. I decided to get into this race for a lot of reasons. One of them is we need to make sure we are always upholding the Constitution, also transparency in our government, limited government, family values. And I know the word you're going to hear a lot is also budget. I think we really need to look into what the definition of budget is, because I think most of our elected current officials don't understand the definition of budget. And I don't blame them, because I think most people who have not, or are not from the private sector, do not understand what it is to live on a budget or deal on a private business on a budget. I started in the mortgage financing, and then I moved up into buying and fixing homes. And then now I do buy, fix, and hold, just simply because I'm just so tired of the government overreach. Every single time I do a transaction, it's over 35% that they would get into my pocket. And that's basically, I'd even say, hey, thanks for working those seven hours a week. So I think if you don't understand what it is to really break down and sweat to the point to where you have people relying on you and understand that you cannot spend somebody else's money, it's a lot easier to spend somebody else's money when it's not your money. So from the private sector, we need to have more people who are not only in the private sector, but are really involved in our community. And that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Hello. Thanks, everyone, for being here. I'm Tom Westmoreland. My family's here. We live in Eagle Mountain. Currently, the mayor, I've spent four years on the city council, and I'm in my seventh year as mayor of Eagle Mountain. And so we're pretty proud of our accomplishments in Eagle Mountain and the way we've dealt with all of the, you know, all of the growth issues and all of the challenges that municipalities have. And those translate really well to the county. Eagle Mountain is really proud of the way we push information out. We invest a lot into our messaging to make sure we get the story right, and we get information out to our people and keep them informed, and give them opportunities to give us feedback. We've initiated citizen advisory boards in various categories to work with the city and work with residents on accomplishing certain goals in the city. We've, we really like our outdoor recreation and our wildlife, so we've preserved a deer migration corridor and 6,500 acres of open space for our kids and our mountain bikers to run in. Also, economy is really important, especially as inflation is pinching all of us. So in Eagle Mountain, we've worked really hard to create a local economy to offset the pressures on raising taxes. And just maybe the differences between me and the other candidates, let's see, Skyler's younger than I am, Jay's shorter, I have more hair than Andrew, and Diane's nicer.
Hello. I am Andrew Jackson, and as I like to say, a bald man always knows first when it's raining. My name Andrew Jackson, yes, just like the president, and you can go on jacksonforutah.org and find the story behind that. I have a bachelor's and master's from BYU in geography with an emphasis in planning. I also went back mid-career and got a master's of public administration, also from BYU. I've worked for over 30 years helping cities and towns and the county and the state on various aspects of transportation, planning, Meals on Wheels program, et cetera. But I just want to tell a little story about a person who some may call a bureaucrat because he spent his entire career working government service, and that's John Adams. Without him, we would not have this country. And the quote that he has when his son asked him about his government service, and he said, "My son, government service must be done by someone. If the wise decline it, others will not. If the honest refuse it, others will not." And I've tried to live my career in a way that John Adams would be proud of the service that I've given. Thank you for your time.
I'm Diane Garcia, and I am running for county commissioner because I have been an employee for Utah County for 19 years, and I have seen things and heard things that the public are not aware of, and I want to change that. I want to bring transparency. I want to bring information. I travel all over this county doing my job. I deal with real estate agents, with title companies, attorneys, farmers, ranchers, landowners, developers. I have traveled this whole county. One of the things I thought of as I drove up tonight was, years ago, I came out to inspect a development that was going in, and they were still trying to get the tax benefit of Green Belt. And I knew this development was going in, and I kind of always joke or laugh about certain titles of developments. They always try to make them really this picturesque, beautiful thing. And this one was Hawks Landing, Jacob's Ranch area. And I drove up, and I'm like, Hawks Landing, how funny. And just then, a hawk landed on the sign by me, and I'm like, oh, that's where they got the name, Hawks Landing. So just because you live in a place doesn't mean you can represent it the best. I can represent the county because I traveled this county for 19 years. I have experienced what this county has to offer. I have seen leadership lacking, and I want to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. One quick note that I forgot. We want to thank Lakeview Academy and their extreme graciousness in letting us be here today, and they set up this all for us. So can we get a round of applause for them? Thank you very much. All right, first question.
All right. Thank you for all being here. And we're going to start off on something that really hits home tonight trying to get here, transportation. So traffic congestion is perhaps the most pressing issue affecting Lehigh, Saratoga Springs, and Eagle Mountain. Demand is significantly outstripping capacity on each of our east-west corridors. So the first question for Mr. Ugarte is, and this will go to everyone, but what are your top transportation project priorities to ease congestion in North Utah County?
Well, number one is we got to sit down, talk with the UTA people and then engineering department, see if we can actually get somebody who is effective. The other two is we also got to see how we can have the business be brought here to this side of the west side of Lake, because it seems like most people are having to travel to the east side of the lake. Somehow, the development started with building a bunch of homes, but forgot that people needed a place to work. People would have to travel somewhere to go earn their dollars. So there's got to be a way that we can focus on having that be focused right here on this side of the lake. Because the whole corridor that is the Pioneer Crossing also should have been effectively designed back in the day, and it's not. So the question is, why? Is it incompetence? Is it that you did not see that in the next four or five years, we're going to be growing? So there's these engineers, and engineers, I'm sorry, and elected officials who we should be holding accountable for. Now, me coming from the private sector, I could look at things a little bit different and not so much in the way it has been done. And I think we need to bring businesses here where people do not have to go and travel elsewhere to do their job, so.
How much time again do we have? Two minutes? Okay. Let me do a quick run-through. So some of the things that are happening right now, some of you may have noticed that Mountain View Corridor, that there are trucks and equipment out there right now pushing dirt. That will be completed sometime in '26, and that will be a 70 mile an hour road. That's necessary to get that north-south connection, to give something to the east-west to hook up to. So the idea is to make it, yeah, the I-15 West. So 2100 is going to get filled in as a freeway. That's in the works. Also, a new project, I say new, even though we've been working on it for some time, but this is, maybe this is a prime example, sometimes we are our own worst enemies, because every time we disagree on alignments, then nothing moves forward. So the quicker we can agree and unite and make the project real, the quicker we can get it in the pipeline and collectively, then that means something to the state. So the project I was describing is the extension of Pony Express east to the freeway. So for a long time, the cities just went back and forth on alignments because there was no perfect alignment. We hadn't planned for it. From an Eagle Mountain perspective, we said, hey, we'll build it, and Eagle Mountain will drive on it. But now it's becoming a project so it can move forward. SR-73 is shovel-ready. We're really close to getting funding on that. We're also preserving right away for the Cedar Valley Freeway that will head south and eventually all the way around the lake. I think that's most of these, most of those projects. Thank you.
Transportation is very important. It reminds me of a Steve Martin joke, which is the three steps to become a millionaire. Step one, get a million dollars. We can solve the transportation issues. We've got a plan for it. We just have this little problem of $30 billion. Utah gets approximately $1 billion from the federal government, another $1 billion in state funds to do projects, and then this year, the state legislature, thank you very much, has also identified an additional billion dollars for transportation projects. So we've got it moving, we could get it done really quick. We just need that $30 billion. The other thing is, if you look at I-15 in between Linden and American Fork, you'll see that that's always congested. The problem isn't I-15. The problem is the other roads around there. My father-in-law had hip problems. He went to the doctor, wanted to get his hips replaced. The doctor said, "Your knees need to be replaced." He said, "I don't have any pain in my knees." The doctor said, "Let's replace your knees and see what happens." They replaced his knees, and his hip pain went away. The pain that we see in one area may be because we have a problem that is in another area, and it just manifests itself there. Again, go to jacksonforutah.org, and you can see I've got the thing on the grid system as well as identifying those projects that have been talked about. May 10th, the UDOT Transportation Commission will decide on funding and a timeframe for those projects. So make that information, make your requests known to UDOT. Thank you.
So I attend the majority of the county commission meetings, and during county commission meetings, the commissioners vote on different things that affect the county. Transportation is usually not something that is voted on. I actually went back the last six months and went through all of the county commission meetings and the items on the agenda, and there were 214 about the budget and 27 about transportation. A lot of what happens at transportation is with Mountain Lands Association of Governments. Each of the mayors from all of the cities are on that board, along with the three commissioners. So it is a collective effort to improve our county's transportation and planning. So it doesn't fall just on the shoulders of a commissioner and what they will or will not do. The monies come from a percentage of sales tax. So getting more sales tax can generate some money, but also having the entire county as your priority and not where you're from, or who you know, or what area has more influential people or more money. So it would go by what areas are most congested, what areas have the most accidents and are the unsafe roads. Those are the priorities and not playing politics with the money for projects for transportation.
So we've covered the projects. I want to cover philosophy. So we hear all of these projects, and I don't know about you, but it feels like it takes 10 years to get anywhere. Your voice is not heard. We suffer for years, and then it's solved. We must change our priorities. We must change our funding mechanisms, and it starts with the legislature. Our best block is our legislature. Salt Lake has more legislators, but guess who has more Republican legislators in the majority, Utah County? So we need to work together, and we need to solve these problems. And it takes somebody who lives up here, who drives on our roads, who sees it every day. It took me like 15 minutes to turn on the Pioneer Crossing today. We can't continue to have quality of life decrease and build and build and build. We take the brunt of affordable housing in Lehigh, Saratoga, Eagle Mountain. We're doing our fair share, and guess what? We're not getting rewarded for it. We need to start being the squeaky wheel, gets the grease, and we need to start saying, no. North Utah County, Utah County as a whole, we need better funding, better planning. The south county is going to experience exactly what we've been experiencing the last 10 years. If you drive in Spanish Fork or Payson, it looks just like we did 10 years ago. So let's not make the same mistakes we've made up here down in the south.
Let's move on to another topic, housing. So Northwest Utah County has experienced some of the most rapid growth in the state. Shortage of housing and housing affordability have become pressing issues. The Utah Code requires each county to adopt a plan for moderate housing. First question, how should the county plan for moderate housing, and to what extent should the county address housing affordability? Mayor Westmoreland, you're first.
Yeah. Hello? It's on? Okay, just talk louder? Okay, okay, good. Yeah, this is an interesting question from a county perspective, because typically we address this from a city perspective. So the county does not typically do residential developments. So these are the kind of questions that really, really go to the city. But what this does touch on, though, from a county level, is county-level planning and general plans, because you need, you're going to need a variety of products of housing. And it's what's really important is where these houses go and where these products go. Because when we decide where they go, that's going to determine the strength of our community. We can't, so the question was more moderate housing, and generally, when we speak of moderate, we take a median income and index it that way. So that's, you know, more, that would be like the house I live in, kind of a thing. So not in the affordable category. But yeah, Eagle Mountain builds, we build a lot of houses, and we've been able to plan to put the right products in the right place. And the county really could, is going to be working with the cities as the city's annex property. That's going to be one of the big questions, because one of the things we have to be careful of is the county has to get involved in that early, because if the, you know, developer gets too far out in front of it before the city really gets engaged, you could have a disconnect. So that's where the city and the county needs to work together on the planning of those housing products.
So the affordable housing or moderate income housing plans have actually been state law since 1997. I worked on several of those throughout the county here in Utah County, Wasatch, and Summit Counties. The problem I see with it is that, one, we're just looking at the city's zoning and density and a few of those kind of things, building permits, as the sole culprit of unaffordable housing, and that's not necessarily so. It's a, a lot of it has to do with market supply and demand. Another thing that we need to be aware of is that when we put in utilities or have developers put in utilities, we often have them oversize the water and sewer lines. So maybe we want this area to be quarter acre lots, but the water and sewer lines could hold up to 10 units per acre. And so when a developer comes in, they get that increased density because the utilities conserve greater density. So we need to right-size our utilities. And the other thing that we need to do is address, again, the state issues and our utilities. And I've got the third one, and maybe I'll get that in my closing remarks. Thank you.
If you build it, they will come. That's what we have found out, right? The more we build, the more people are moving here, and our problem isn't being solved. First off, a county commissioner has very little to do with housing. But I'll tell you what, November 1st of 2023, at a county commission meeting, one of the commissioners spoke with our community development director and said, "We need to look at county policy and change it so that we can build more houses out in the unincorporated county." That is wrong. We do not have the infrastructure. We do not have the ability. We do not want them all on wells and all on septic tanks. That is a bad idea to solve the housing problem. So housing and residents are more conducive in cities. Out in the county should be the rural people with acreage and their home. The other thing is affordability. I always get tickled when I hear that word. What is affordability? Right now, I would not be able to buy any home on the market. Thank goodness I bought my home back in 1999, because I wouldn't be able to buy one right now, and I wouldn't be able to rent. I'd have to get a whole bunch of people to move in with me and my family to be able to afford it. So affordability is a strange word. Now subsidized, that has come up, and recently, there were 200 townhomes in Lehigh that went before the county commissioners, and they got their property taxes abated because they are going to supply affordable housing that all of us are paying the difference in our property taxes for them to provide.
Yeah, so everyone's covered. The county doesn't really approve subdivisions. Anytime someone comes with a subdivision, it gets annexed to the nearest municipality. But I'm going to just say a quick, easy statement here. When has the government ever solved the free market problem? They don't. It's not our role. It's not our responsibility. Get out of the way. It's supply and demand. The county has no business working on affordable housing. Do I feel for people? Absolutely. My friends, my age, thankfully, like Diane, I bought mine only eight years ago, but thankfully I did. I couldn't afford a house now, and I feel for that. But the market will work itself out. We see how it goes. It ebbs and flows, and the government needs to just stay out of the way.
Along the same lines that my colleague here said, me being in the private sector, buying and fixing homes, yeah, we do not need government. I mean, government doesn't fix anything. Government doesn't do anything other than spend our money. And it's never been the government's responsibility to house. Now, there is programs out there, first-time home buyers. There is also Section 8 for people who can qualify to get help. Now, are these programs out there for longevity? No, they're to get you back on your feet. Now, that's another topic we can cover down the road. But government cannot be involved in our housing. One example, our great governor is going to create 35,000-plus homes projected in the next five years. We are growing faster than that. We cannot have the government continue to tell us what we can afford and what we cannot. What we can afford is to have limited government be involved in our lives.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to change topics again, and this is going to be for Mr. Jackson. So we're jumping to the county commission. In January, the county commission voted unanimously to raise their own salaries by $27,000. Commissioners now make $166,000 per year. Question one, do you believe this pay increase was appropriate? Why or why not?
So I wasn't involved in that, and I will promise to you that I will not vote to increase my salary if I become a county commissioner, and I won't vote to increase anybody else's salary until there's been an election. But one of the things we have is New Corstil in the book, Good to Great. The, one of the executives in New Corstil said, "We have the hardest-working steelworkers in the country. We get five people, pay them for eight, and get the work of 10." Too often in government, we get 10 people, pay them for eight, get the work of six, and then call that conservative. I don't think that's conservative. What we need to do is have good people, and what you have to do as a delegate is to determine, is the person who's doing that work is the person who's doing that work, are they worthy of that hire? Is that a good expense or a poor expense?
So since I've been with the county for 19 years, I have seen many raises and increases. So a few years back, the county commissioners raised the salary of their assistants, and they changed their title. And that was in order to give them an increase. Now, the commissioners have increased their salary, but they have also added another person to help them out. So they are increasing the money that they're pulling from the budget, but they are increasing other people to do their job. And I disagree with it, and I would not have done it. And if I'm voted as commissioner, there would not be a raise for the commissioners in the four years.
I'm absolutely opposed, and if you've been following this campaign, I'm the one who brought this to be a campaign issue. It's out of control. But I want to give some background on how we got there. So the study by HR was the four closest counties, Salt Lake in population, Salt Lake, Davis, Wasatch, and Washington County. And we decided we were too underpaid compared to those four other counties. Well, I don't know about you, but I don't care what Salt Lake County pays their commissioners. I want nothing to do with Salt Lake County. So why are we adding that as our formula for figuring out if we're paid? You know, when we have the sheriff and the assessor, the sheriff could go be a police chief in another city. The assessor could go be an appraisal, appraiser in the private sector. We absolutely need to keep up competitively with those kinds of positions. Your county commissioner can be any walk of life, anybody. They're not competing against somebody else. They can't go to run to be a commissioner of Wasatch County. So why are we competing with them? So I think we need to change it to median income formula, whatever that may be. Let's look at the history of 40, 50 years, and maybe it's 1.5X of the median income, whatever it may be. Then it takes the politics out of it. It takes the competition of taxpayers' competition out of it. And let's make a formula based on what our residents are making.
On that note, I think it's all bureaucracy. It's all these people who do not understand the meaning of a budget. It's easier, again, to spend somebody else's money than your own. It's so much easier to use the excuse that we are going to be competitive with the other counties, but really, are you? You're not performing. You're not, you're not being paid on a per quota basis. Half the time of some of the stuff that I've been reading is some of these sitting heads on the commission work only 20 hours a week, and then half the other job is done by assistants. Really? We didn't elect you nor put you in that spot so you can hire assistants. And on top of that, again, government is not producing anything. Let's, let's be real. Let's look at the fact, the fact that we are elected to represent you and not our own pocket or other special interest groups. We are here to represent the county and make sure that the needs are met of us, the county, not other people who are looking to invest in our county. Now, again, Salt Lake is doing their thing. I want to work with Salt Lake and the other counties, but we need to focus on what we're doing here. And again, having to increase your pay without bringing it up and saying, hey, by the way, we are going to increase our pay and not get it approval by you guys, the taxpayers, to me is not transparency. To me is not looking into the best interest of what I've been elected to do for you guys.
So you may or may not know that mayors don't make a lot of money. And I haven't had an increase as a mayor the time I've been there. And, you know, of course, we have to, you know, our families have expenses, and we need to take care of our families. But that's not, the reason I'm doing is not, has nothing to do with the amount of money. It's really my passion for the service and to be able to make a difference in my community. I think one of the misses, and one of the things that would have been a problem for me in this increase is, the same time we have the increase, we had a shortfall and a miss on the budget. And those, those two things are going opposite directions. So, I don't know. I guess I could just end right there.
All right, Ms. Garcia, you're going to be first on this question. In 2020, Utah County voters rejected a proposal to change county government to a mayor council structure similar to Salt Lake County's. Do you think a change in county government is appropriate? And if so, what structural changes would you support?
So when that came before the voters, I was not in favor of it for several reasons. One, I see when we have part-time politicians or elected officials, they have to make a living. So when they're making a living somewhere else, they're not spending or devoting their time and energy to the job of commissioner. So also, they have a higher chance of conflicts of interests and ethical things. So say there's a commissioner who's a developer, and how is he always going to vote? And how's he always going to lean as a commissioner? So we need to think of those things. I was in favor of full-time commissioners, because then we can expect full-time. I am applying for a full-time job. I'm going to do full-time effort, full-time hours, and I am going to give you full-time results. That's what I expect from our county commissioners, as I've worked with them throughout the years, and that is not always the case. Many of them use the position of county commissioner as a stepping stone for higher politics, and that's where they really want to go. And that's where their sights are set. That's where their mind is. That's where their heart is. And they don't give their best to Utah County. And I think that's wrong. I think someday we may be able to go to more commissioners, but right now, I don't think it's warranted. I think if we expect our three commissioners to do a full-time job and full-time hours, then we'll get the work that we need done.
So like Diane, I was opposed to the 2019 mayor council forum. I don't like a strong mayor. I think it's too much power in one individual, and we see in other areas, it blows up. Their office needs a PR director and a development director and three deputies, and it gets too big. But I will say, I'm leaning towards five part-time commissioners. And I'll say, the way we have three Open Public Meetings Act, two of them cannot even speak to each other legally. That happens, I'm sure. But legally, they should not communicate with each other about actionable agenda items. So if we move to five, that allows better communication and flow. And we've also seen Commissioner Sakovic has been ill, and he attends as best he can, but he misses a couple when he's dealing with his health issues. So then we're down a commissioner. So five part-time, I think, is an ideal option. And we're able to do that because we hired a county administrator in December. And that person takes over day-to-day duties and the vision and the commissions and the boards that the commission sits on would then be the focus of five part-time. If we did move to five full-time, I would consider it, but we must eliminate the full-time policy advisors, the assistants. If we move to five full-time, we cannot afford as taxpayers to go from an office of six to an office of 13-plus just for efficiencies. So we'll need to eliminate those extra assistants if we do move to full-time, in my opinion.
To me, it sounds like sneaky government. It just keeps being overreached, being overreached, and more reasons to create more government. Do we really need more government in our lives? I don't think so. The three bore, I think, would work. And again, Utah County is not as big as we want to make to think that it is. I mean, we're nearing about a maybe million or something or so. Maybe we can have each head focus on one part of the either northwest area of the county, the other on the Midwest and central area, and the other on the south end part of the county. This would be wise with how we're going to be spending our money, because the more we bring people on board, somebody has to pay for it. And unfortunately, it's not the poor, nor is the well-off individuals. It usually gets paid on the middle-class backs. How much more do we want to continue to be subsidizing all of these bureaucratic jobs that get passed on on the simplicity of saying, yes, we want to have more efficient government? Government is not efficient in any shape, way, or form. No government and no expanding, nor bringing anybody more on board, because Salt Lake went from almost the same system, and they ended up costing him over plus of $3 million, more than what they were originally spending. So no more bureaucracy, no more expanding of government.
As a mayor, I serve full-time, and I wouldn't do it any other way, because I believe my residents deserve a full-time commitment from their mayor. And so for much, many of the same reasons, I would have hesitated about serving as a part-time commissioner, because commissioners aren't always, I'm sorry, part-time people can't, can't always be available. And to get really important things done, it takes time, dedication, and commitment, and passion around the clock to make things happen. And if, if, if someone is pulled different directions with other, other commitments to their, their profession, that, that could be very challenging. And we might, we might need to look at some government adjustments. But the other thing that that would do, too, with part-time, you have a tendency to be a little more bureaucratic. The, many of the responsibilities tend to get pushed towards staff because, because the part-time official can't be there. So, but really, ultimately, we need to be looking at the form of government and make appropriate adjustments. But ultimately, there's nothing magic about the form of government. It's, it really is about the skill, the passion, and commitment of the individuals that serve.
I think that there was a bunch of misinformation that came forward on the vote. There was an opportunity to move forward with the vote on a different form of government a couple of years before, but that was stymied, and the new process that was put forward was bad, and there's a bunch of misinformation. So people would say, oh, we're going to be just like Salt Lake County if we do this. Not exactly. If you look at Salt Lake County, all of the libraries, a lot of the parks, all of the senior centers are owned by the county. They are an urban county. Utah County is a rural county, as Diana stated. So the cities have the senior centers, the cities have the libraries, the cities have those services. Students have that. I'm opposed to any full-time politician. Out of the 21 mayors that we have in Utah County, we have two that are full-time. So we have mayors who work full-time, but they compensate at part-time. I think that we should also have politicians should be like NASCAR drivers and have the logos of their sponsors on their suits. And you have to look and see who's sponsoring who. We had a little while ago, a full-time commissioner who was looking to sell Brightenville Falls to one of his donors, right? And so you have to see, what is the heart? Where's the heart at? Is it a part of service that's in there? Are they skilled? And do they have the skills that they can do the work at a high level without a lot of extra staff? And that's why it's important that it's not just anybody, it's like, not anybody can be a school teacher. But you have to have that knowledge and experience. And when you hire someone as a county commissioner who's knowledge and experience, it's going to have cost savings. And I would work towards separating out the powers instead of having three powers in three people, and then I would also spread it.
Mr. Beltran, this is going to be a question for you. We're changing topics once again to the sheriff's department. The Utah County Sheriff's Office terminated an agreement with Federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, in 2016 due to strict regulations ICE placed on local law enforcement partners. This led the Biden administration to designate Utah as a sanctuary state for illegal immigrants. Do you support the Utah County Sheriff's Office in this situation? Why or why not? We haven't had this for like, six-week campaigns, so I'm impressed. You're doing your homework. Yes, I absolutely support the sheriff, and I met with him about this when I first got into this race. And there was a lot of controversy when he did that. And he has a good explanation for it, and you vaguely covered it. The federal government had so many regulations, and they were able to come into our facilities and required us to upgrade them to nicer standards than like a luxury hotel for illegal immigrants in order to have that status. So I absolutely do support Sheriff Smith in that. Illegal immigration is an issue, and it's becoming more of an issue every single day. And we need to be hyper-focused on it. We need to support the sheriff. We need to ensure proper adequate funding to handle these things. But to answer the question, yes, I do support. You get to hire and fire Sheriff Smith. So as a commissioner, I'm not his boss. I'm not the other ones' bosses. And we sometimes have that complex of they think they're in charge of the commission office. They are not in charge. You are in charge. You get to hire and fire your elected officials, and you picked Sheriff Smith, and I personally feel he's doing a good job.
I think, again, you choose the people who are going to represent you. And I have not chatted with the sheriff, but I think it's a unique situation that we really need to start addressing. Do I agree with it? I'm not too fully informed with the federal thing that came through, but I do see a problem with the immigration system. And I know that the commission also represents us at the state and also at the federal level, which we should be pushing for ICE and closing of the borders. Another thing is that I don't really agree at the state level is the fact that we have been a sanctuary state, and we have not been informed about it. Our great governor seems to be okay with it for certain interests, to put in layman's terms. But again, this is going to affect us very, very much, because it takes about $250,000 per person, say there's four people in a family per year, to have them be indoctrinated into our system. So that's about $1 million. Now, we, last time that I heard, we are receiving busloads from El Paso being shipped here because it's a shorter trip than to send them to San Francisco or New York. New York doesn't even want them anymore. So they're like, hey, we'll send them to Salt Lake. They're okay with it. So think about that math. Somebody has to pay that money. So we really got to look into how we can manage the problem. And yes, I understand we got to be compassionate, but I think if you're not being compassionate on being criminalizing because you're not caring to go through the proper steps to come into the country. So we really, really got to look into that.
So Eagle Mountain contracts with the county for law enforcement. So as the mayor, I get to work closely with Sheriff Smith and, and those officers and know what they deal with. And this, yeah, this was nothing more than, well, I was going to say nothing more than a political trick, but I guess it is more than that, because this is a threat by the federal government. If we don't submit, they're, they're going to push it in our face. So this is where we need to band together, and we need to be prepared and to be resilient to deal with this kind of backlash from our federal government and be able to adapt. Yeah, the, the trick of calling us a sanctuary state and then putting us in a bind, so there are no, there are no ISIS, there are no ICE holding facilities in this state. So this is the federal government not doing their job, dumping it back on our people, and then playing tricks with us by making us fund what they're supposed to be doing. So we're going to have to go the extra mile to be prepared to deal with this stuff, because I'm quite confident this is not the last we're going to see of, of things like this. And so the more we can make our resilient, our community resilient, and yeah, it's, it's going to take commitment by all of us, working together and understanding that problem. And I don't know, should I keep talking until I get a clap, maybe? I don't know.
I couldn't really give a care. Yeah, care. I couldn't give a care what Biden wants to label us. We're not a sanctuary state. We're not a sanctuary county. We are a peculiar people here, and I'm happy to stand up and be one of those people who goes against the Kool-Aid that's put out there. I support Sheriff Smith. I supported Sheriff Tracy before that. And you can go back and look at all the election results, and every time there's election, the county sheriff got more votes than any of the election, the county sheriff got more votes than any of the county commissioners. We don't need someone who's going to go in there and micromanage the county sheriff's office. We need someone who supports the sheriff and attorney's office. And I do that wholly with knowing that you've elected them. Thank you.
So, so I was working at, at the county when Sheriff Tracy was struggling and managing this ICE facility that at first, we were getting this wonderful federal money that seemed so frosting on the cake kind of a thing. How awesome is this, right? We, we have to arrest some of these people anyway, so now we're getting all this federal money. But then it became a burden. And all the strings that were attached to this money started showing up. One of the things that's required is when a detainee has any health problem, they have so many hours before they get them their health care. And it was costing millions of dollars to provide this care. It became a burden. And it was wonderful when Sheriff Smith came in and decided it was no longer beneficial for Utah County to do this anymore. So, we have to look at all of these federal things. When they dangle money in front of us, what strings are dangling behind that money? What things are going to be expected of us? What burdens are we going to have to bear? What liabilities are we opening ourselves, our employees, our citizens to because we're accepting this? I think standing on our own two feet and figuring problems out ourself is always the way to go.
Okay, next topic. I want to ask you about the Health Department. Mr. Ugarte, you're going to be first. So, last summer, Lehigh City experienced an E. coli water contamination in city reservoirs. The Utah County Health Department had the lead on the investigation. Residents were given conflicting directions from the county as well as to the state Health Department and the CDC. We also all remember the chaos and inconsistencies during the COVID pandemic. So, our question for you, how do you see the county Health Department's track record over the recent past? And how do you think it could be improved?
Well, number one, I think we really have to have those people understand that there's a thing called the Constitution and the Fourth Amendment. And we need to also have these people understand that they are put in the situ, in the, in that position so they can do the best that they are elected and put on that job to do. And I think we really got to look at how they're performing, and if they're not performing, and what jobs should not still be on the books, and why not they should not be in the books. Now, the water, E. coli, also, we should jump on that ASAP because it's going to affect everybody in, in the community. And why are they not jumping on it as quickly? That's a mystery to myself as well. I mean, I'll give you an example that has nothing to do with that, but I called the county once and I said, "Hey, there's some potholes on my property." And, I mean, in front of my, one of my properties where I get to, on the street. And they gave me the runaround and finally I talked to somebody. And they said, "Well, Mr. Ugarte, thank you for being a concerned citizen, but there is no money allocated to fix that or resolve that for you because there's more urgent matters." So, I told her that, "Well, when they sent me my tax bill, I was going to tell her that I have more urgent matters than to pay my tax bill." She didn't like that. She didn't think it was comical at all. Again, the same thing with these errors and these things that end up happening. We got to act because we are in the best interest of the community. It should always be first and only the best interest of us, members of the community.
Okay, there's a few things to unpack here, and I'm going off of memory. But it, the way I remember it on that Lehigh water thing, I think some of the confusion was that E. coli was actually in secondary water. And so, they were kicking back and forth on what, you know, who was going to make the call on that. I may be off, but that's the way I remember it. But the important thing here is communication. So, I remember a few years back, one of the wells, this is going all the way back when I was on, on the city council. And one of our wells was broken into. Now, it, it turned out it was just a high school prank. But we didn't know. We had no idea what we had. We didn't know if, you know, it could have been a terrorist attack. It could have been a dead animal in there. It could have been anything. We didn't know. And so, what we did is we immediately notified our residents and said, "We don't think there's a threat, but frankly, we don't know." So, we would advise that take precautions, make your own judgments, but you just need to be informed. And then we immediately went about to drain that tank, to clean it out, investigate it, and there was nothing but a couple of rocks in there. So, but yeah, so circling back to the Health Department and COVID, yeah, that was, that was an interesting situation. I remember especially the first few weeks is we were really trying to get information and, you know, kind of go up the information food chain. And we were told, "Well, nobody knows." And, you know, "What do you mean, nobody knows?" Yet, you're, you're asking us to do all of these things and no one knows? And so, what we did, you know, at first, we, we took all the precautions we could. We even made a declaration of emergency. But it was so harsh, no one even knew we did it. But the reason we did it is just in case, you know, we needed a FEMA truck or something, our people would be first in line.
As Tom says, there's several things involved in this. So, first of all, we want to hire good people, and we want to trust that they have the best information possible, and then they can make those best decisions. And I think that happens most of the time. There's not somebody who says, "I'm going to be the Health Department. I'm going to make the worst decisions possible." And when we had like, the COVID issue, there was a whole bunch of unknowns associated with that. We had the federal government telling us we couldn't do the Meals on Wheels program. We had to shut that down. We had to shut down the senior centers. We had discussions with the mayors. And one of the big issues was American Fork shut down their pickleball court, but Lehigh didn't. And so, all the people from American Fork were going to Lehigh and using the pickleball court. So, they kind of came together as mayors and said, "We're going to have the pickleball courts open." If it was typhoid and you made those same decisions as COVID, everybody would be cheering. But we found out that a lot of the data was wrong. And hindsight is always 2020. We would have made different decisions. But we're trying to make the best decisions that we could, given the information we had.
Really quick, Ms. Garcia, before we jump to you. Mr. Westmoreland actually gets a rebuttal because he was mentioned by Mr. Jackson.
Oh, did you? I didn't, I even missed it.
Yeah, I, I see. You're right.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Well, that's a, yeah. I gotta, I gotta take Andrew to task for that, for sure. But, well, you know what? Can I take advantage and just finish my statement? So, yeah, we actually, yeah. No, I appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, you got it. Yeah, no, we, you know, we, we gave it the two weeks, but then we, after that, yeah, we encouraged our people to get out in the sunshine and, and on the trails and, and get, get fresh air. We, we were not restrictive. We, we let people make their own judgment calls. Thank you, Andrew.
And with that, Mr. Jackson gets a rebuttal.
Yes!
The third thing I had on affordable housing was, "High density does not equal affordability." Thank you very much.
Ms. Garcia, you are up.
What was the question? No. No, I got it. I got it. Okay. So, first off, we need to remember that hindsight is 2020. And everything happened in 2020, right? So, we had never experienced things like this before. So, it did put a strain on the Health Department. It put a strain on all of us. The head of the Health Department is not an elected official. They are appointed by the commissioners. So, it is someone that is held responsible directly to them and not to the public as far, far as an election or voting. So, that is something to keep in mind. There's a lot of different departments within the Health Department. Environmental Health is one of them, which deals with environmental threats like contaminated water. And they have to deal with the cities. They have to communicate with the cities. But their job is to make our communities safe. And that is their job. And they do need to be held accountable. There needs to be communication and cooperation between the Health Department and the different entities that they serve so that communication can go out to the citizens, so that you're aware. Basically, people don't trust the government, right? They say, "The water's safe? The water's not safe? What, who are you going to believe? What are you going to believe?" So, definitely, that needs to be improved. And, and information, sometimes they think that we can't handle all the information, that it might panic us or something. But now that we've been through this huge pandemic, we need information.
So, we've heard, "Trust the experts and hindsight's 2020." Well, I'll tell you what, your freedom and my freedom is not trust the experts and is not hindsight 2020. There is never a time when we are taking forced action from the government to mask ourselves, to get vaccines, to be forced to do arrows in the grocery store. No, hindsight is not 2020. We will not trust the experts. The expert is your elected official. The Health Department is an unelected bureaucrat, and they've made a mask mandate in our county while three commissioners said it was fine. No, they are unelected. The person you get to hire and fire is your commissioner, and they will be the one that makes the decision. And the decision from me will be you get to make the decision. Now, E. coli in Lehigh, I write for the Lehigh Free Press on the side. I've done it for six years, and I've covered every city council meeting. And if you live anywhere in Lehigh, you've read my stories. I covered this E. coli story in detail. And at a, at a city council meeting, the Health Department told the city councilwoman, Paige Albrecht, "We can't tell you any information because it's a HIPAA violation." She said, "Well, can you tell us what, 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 what area of the city is being affected so we can notify our residents or go look in that water source?" Nope, it's a HIPAA violation. So, Councilwoman Albrecht said, "Well, have you asked the two victims or the two people in the hospital if they will waive their HIPAA rights to help the community solve this problem quickly?" Nope, we never asked. So, you know, unelected people, trust the experts. We should not be trusting the experts. Your elected official is who you get to hire and fire, and those are the decision makers.
No applause, remember. Okay, so, with our time, let's see, let's, Mayor Westmoreland, you'll, this question will start with you. This is going to be the last question of the evening, and then we'll go into our closing arguments. The ASD split. Alpine School District recently laid out six options for splitting the district. Which factors would you consider most important when deciding on the best option? Do you have a preferred option? Please explain.
You're going to get me in trouble with all my people for this, I think. But, no, this has been very interesting, looking at the school discussion, the, the split options. And, you know, we look at all the numbers. ASD did, hired a contractor to do a study and come up with a snapshot of, of what those numbers look like. And the great thing from, from my perspective is it makes Eagle Mountain look really good. You know, without seeing those numbers, people might think, "Well, you know, Eagle Mountain has all this growth, and they got to build a lot of schools, and we don't want to be tied with that." But when you look at the numbers, with our data center property tax, that, that's what goes to the school district. It's not sales tax. It's the property tax. And so, in that, Eagle Mountain is in the strongest position. And, oh gosh, I have to be so careful what I say. Good, well, here's the thing, is we need to think even beyond the school district. We need to think regionally. And so, the coalitions among the cities, you know, when you're talking schools, you're often talking roads. And so, being, being able to, you know, keep those coalitions working together in, in the same direction is really beneficial. But, yeah, certainly, I mean, when it comes to the school district, Eagle Mountain, and it's, it's probably likely Eagle Mountain and Saratoga will, will form their own school district is what I anticipate. There might be some other variations of that depending upon what other, other cities do. But the fact is that, that we're in, we're, we're in really good shape looking forward.
So, this last time was not the first time that was, this was looked at. This was looked at many years ago when Jerry Washburn was the mayor of Orm, and there was a study done. Unfortunately, that study was done by friends of administrators at the school district. And so, I think that was tainted as well. If we look at this, we have to not only look at what funding we have today, but what funding has been put in place from years before. I'm a 1982 graduate of Orm High, "Go Tigers!" And there was a lot of infrastructure that was put in place by other communities. So, we have to make that fair. I think one of the big problems with that, with the school district is that it's sectioned off. And so, some would say, "Well, if you don't like it, vote your school district member off the board." But you can't because it's district. So, you can only vote for those within your area, if that makes sense. But I think it needs to be studied. And if it works out, it works out. But it's up to you, the voters, to decide.
So, this is a hot topic, an emotional topic. And it's also a topic that a county commissioner cannot vote on. It is not something that's brought before the county commissioners. So, we may have an opinion. We may have our thoughts. We may be upset because our children may be moved to a different district. But we do not vote on it. But we do need to pay attention to it because the majority of your property tax dollars goes to the school districts. So, the county assesses, collects, and distributes those taxes for them, and it's your money. So, you do need to stand up. But as a county commissioner, we do not have a vote on it.
So, to piggyback on Diane, there is not a bigger political decision we'll make, everyone in this room, in the next 10 years, than that school district split. And it's really under the radar. It's over 70% of your tax bill. So, every time you get your tax bill and you're mad that it's doubled in the last seven, eight years. The county gets like 300 bucks. The city gets like 300 bucks. The school district, 1,700 bucks. It will have a significant impact on our finances. That being said, the best option, I think it's too big. You know, regionally, representation, culturally, efficiency, bureaucratic administration, all of those things, it is too big, and we do need to split. The voters will get to pick. Do I think we've been given adequate information in the study? No, I think we need more information. It sounds as though a couple cities are going to do inter-local agreements, and we'll expedite that process. But ultimately, it's up to you. I'm going to tie it into the county commission, and it's not something most people know. This year in the legislative session, there was a school district bill. The county commission next year, the three people that we have on the commission will draw the school district boundaries for every school district split. So, whether it be two, three, whatever it may be, the three people at the county will draw your school district boundaries. So, it's a very important role. It's, we need a conservative person in those roles. And that is a very impactful to your representation, both for taxes and policy.
Ms. Garcia, you were called out. Take 30 seconds.
So, I have attended truth and taxation meetings put on by the school districts. And it's interesting when they say they're holding the tax rate and that it's the county assessor's fault if your taxes go up. They know, and they're counting on the fact that your property values are going to go up because they are asking for more money. So, I would attend every truth and taxation meeting, and I would be right up front, and I would be questioning them and holding them responsible.
Did you get your heat up? No, I was excellent.
Mr. Ugarte.
I think they've covered a lot of what I think we need to be paying attention to because I think it is going to affect how we get taxed on. And also, what the cities decide to do would come to your lap. But also, I think the whole school district is a giant that we really need to see how we can break down. I mean, most of our kids today, I'm sorry, they're not being prepared. The education system is not performing the way The education system is not performing the way it should be. It seems like our kids in America are not at the world stage competitiveness. China's not worrying about whether their feelings are going to get hurt or if somebody thinks that they're going to be a furry, a furry. Okay? But somehow we are being concerned here in America. And I think we really, really need to look at how our kids are being educated. And so I urge you to be more involved in that process because again, it affects not just you and your tax dollar bill, but it also affects your future generations. That's how I feel about that.
Not many people know this, but the whole furry thing was broken by our very, Adam Bartholomew, so you got called out. Do you want to have a rebuttal? Anyway, all right, I wish we could ask 30 more questions, but we want to respect your time. So we're going to go ahead and move to the, the final statement. Each person gets one minute. Mayor Westmoreland, you're first.
Thank you. So, yeah, to, to put it all in a, in a package and tie a bow on it, so with my municipal experience, both executive and legislative, and all of the things we've been doing in Eagle Mountain translate really well to the county. We've already addressing the issues that the county needs to address, whether it's economic development, whether it's open space, whether it's roads and, and even cultural issues. Our values and the things that we hold dear are important to, to protect. And I, I really, as, you know, as Utah County grows, I think there's a real opportunity for us to step up and be an example to the rest of the state. Let's show them that conservatism works and it works for our families. Thank you.
The President Andrew Jackson said, "It is to be regretted that the rich and powerful too often bend the acts of government for their own selfish purposes." I want you to know that this isn't a career for me. It's not a stepping stone to something else. I've had my career, I retired, I've gone back into the private sector and have been working as a consultant, but I want to use my experience and skills to serve you better. There's no hidden agenda. I just want to serve you better. Thank you.
So the Utah County Republican Party platform has what we believe in, what we stand for, what we're going to stand up for. And I just want to touch on two of those things that are very important to me. One of them is private property rights. As we're doing transportation projects and as developers are coming through, we need to respect private property rights. We need to honor that, that those, that those people own. Second is personal responsibility. It is not the government's job to rescue people from bad decisions. And I see that happen all the time at county commission meetings and at Board of Equalizations. They're your tax dollars, they need to pay their fair share, they do not need rescued by the government.
So if this is the first time you've ever heard me or met me or you've seen me during this campaign, you've learned that I say it how it is. And I am not unbashed in my opinion and I'm open to changing it. Absolutely, I'll meet with whoever, whenever. But I don't beat around the bush. You're going to get it from me and you like it or you don't. And I think we need that. We need that at every level of government. I'm willing to say no when we need to. I'm willing to put my neck out and have people mad at me for making the best decision for you. My private sector experience and my civic engagement, I've served as a Utah County Republican Party Chair, I've served the Utah County Board of Adjustments, I've served the Utah County Planning Commission. I put in my service, along with the private sector, I found the best candidate in this race. Once again, Skylar Beltran for Utah County Commission.
I'd like to thank you guys for being here and everybody else who presented this. I think it's a good process to have everybody be in the know and feeling part of the process because I think our government is not considered of including us in the process. And so I think we need to have people who uphold and will always cherish the constitution and the state constitution. We also got to remember that the federal government did not make the states. The states made the federal government. And we need to have people who understand that we are the ones who hire these folks. And again, let's look into a lot of experience. People have said, I have tons of experience, tons of experience. Well, listen, we got Joe Biden. He brought us tons of experience. Look at what we're at. And bringing closer to home, our current governor, he had tons of experience. Look at the stuff we are dealing with. Bringing even closer to home, John Curtis, he brought us tons of experience.
All right, thank you very much. What I want to say to each of you, thank you so much for serving as a delegate. Thanks for working hard. Thanks for taking the time and thanks for taking it seriously and showing up and fighting the Saratoga traffic to get here. I think it's a great thing. And for those of you who brought your kids, super cool. I hope the kids weren't so bored that this, you know, turns them away for, for the future. But we want to thank our candidates. Can we get a hand, a round of applause for them? Great stuff. So the school wants us out by nine o'clock, so we got about a half an hour to chat with the candidates if you'd like. Thanks again for coming. That's it.